Okay, good morning. My name is Nicholas Oliver. I'm the chief of the Bureau of Electronic and Appliance Repair, Home Furnishings and Thermal Insulation. And I will preside over today's hearing. For the record, it is nine oh seven AM on Monday, September seventeenth. We are gathered in the first floor hearing room of the Department of Consumer Affairs, located at seventeen forty-seven North Market Boulevard, Suite one eighty-six in Sacramento, California. We are here to conduct a public hearing on the proposed amendment and adoption of regulations in Title Four, Division Three of the California Code of Regulations, as described in the Notice of Proposed Action duly published in the California Regulatory Notice Register on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and mailed to those on the Bureau's regulation mailing list. Specifically, the Bureau is proposing to adopt amendments to Article thirteen of Division Three of Title Four of the California Code of Regulations concerning proposed changes to current flammability requirements. As part of the regulatory process, the Bureau has provided opportunities for the public to comment on the proposed action to incorporate the amended flammability requirements into regulation. As initial statement of reasons, notice and proposed text were made available for public viewing on the Bureau's web page from on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. This is the final regulatory hearing concerning these proposed changes. First of all, before we begin taking public comments, I ask that all persons attending this hearing, even if you do not wish to testify, please sign the register if you have not already done so. This is to ensure we have a complete record of all those in attendance. In addition, please make sure to indicate next to your name on the register whether you will be testifying today. The purpose of this hearing is to receive oral and written comments concerning the proposed action described in the notice. If anyone has written comments that they wish to present today, you may hand them to me now or at any time before the close of this hearing. I note for the record that as of this morning, the Bureau has received eight written comments. I'll now briefly describe the procedures that will be followed for this regulatory hearing. This entire proceeding is being recorded. We will begin with those that are here in person, followed by those on the teleconference. Persons who wish to present comments, objections, or recommendations are asked to, number one, speak into the microphone clearly to ensure that all testimony is recorded and entered into the record correctly. Those here in person are asked to come to the podium. Two, identify yourself by name and group or business represented, if any. Three, state your position, whether you support or oppose the proposed regulation at the beginning of your testimony, and identify the specific provisions of the regulations to which your comments pertain. The Bureau will not respond to nor discuss any questions, comments, objections, or recommendations today. All comments, objections, and recommendations will be considered, and the Bureau's responses will be included in the final statement of reasons that will be prepared after the close of the public comment period. Those responses will address how the proposed action is modified to accommodate any objection or recommendation, or why any objection or recommendation is rejected. The Bureau will not respond directly to individuals. To obtain a copy of the final statement of reasons once it has been prepared, you may make a written request to the Bureau or access them from our website. It is the desire of the Bureau that the record of the hearing be clear and that the hearing itself be orderly, thus providing all parties with fair and ample opportunity to be heard. After all interested parties have been heard, the hearing will be adjourned. Before we begin, are there any questions concerning the nature of the proceedings or the procedure to be followed?
Hello.
Hi.
When you were taking names and folks who'd like to comment earlier, I'm sorry I wasn't able to get into queue. I was on the webcast and just realized who to call in. My name is Adi Carr. I'm with NRDC, and I'd like to give brief comments supporting the proposed action.
Okay, so let's begin with those folks that are here. So we'll begin with Mark Pedroya from Santa Rosa Firefighters. Thank you, Mark.
Good morning. My name's Mark Pedroya. I'm with the Santa Rosa Firefighters Local fourteen oh one. And I was asked to speak today by the California Professional Firefighters, which is our state labor organization. And we rise in support of repealing Technical Bulletin one thirty-three. Personally, I have thirty-four years' experience in the fire service, twenty-two years of that in a full-service fire prevention bureau, both enforcing the regulation, code enforcement hazardous materials, including cause and origin investigation. So I've seen this on both sides. And we're pretty passionate about it. The standard TB one thirty-three adopted long ago was at the request of the fire service, including many others. And it did serve a purpose, but it did have an unintended side effect. And we've learned about that now. And the health risk due to exposure from carcinogenic flame retardants used to achieve the standard is a concern of the fire service because more firefighters are dying from cancer than active firefighting itself. And this standard and the use of the chemical flame retardants in California exposes our members, the consumers, and even individuals in other states to it. And we believe that we can reduce this risk by repealing TB one thirty-three and conforming to the newer TB one seventeen, two thousand and thirteen standard. Something working in our favor is since we adopted TB one thirty-three long ago, building and fire codes have become much more stringent in public occupancies. Automatic fire sprinklers are almost a given, automatic fire alarm systems. We've done much to reduce fire and improve egress time for occupants of buildings. And the Bureau's not alone in responding to the risks of the chemical flame retardants the CPSC issued guidance last year recommending avoidance of the organohalogens in four categories of consumer products. So we participated in the barrier research study work plan in early two thousand and fifteen, and we followed it. And I've read the barrier research study that was published last month. And we believe TB one seventeen, two thousand and thirteen will provide adequate fire safety without endangering the health of firefighters or the building occupants. Therefore, we support repealing TB one thirty-three, reducing health risks from use and exposure to potentially toxic and untested flame retardant chemicals added to upholstered furniture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. For those on the teleconference, if you are not speaking, could you please mute your phones? Thank you. Next, we will have a comment by Megan Kausman from the San Francisco Department of Environment. Hi, Megan.
Hi, good morning. On behalf of San Francisco Department of the Environment, a city and county agency in San Francisco, we're pleased to support the Bureau's proposal to repeal TB one thirty-three and to allow TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen, to be the California standard for fire resistance in commercial furniture. California's TB one thirty-three standard has led to greater use of chemical flame retardants, both in California and in other states. There's no evidence that TB one thirty-three has improved fire safety or reduced fire losses. This is because the TB one thirty-three standard does not address the major cause of fire, which is smolder ignition sources. By contrast, TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen requires furniture to meet a smolder flammability standard. Furthermore, the addition of flame retardant chemicals to furniture can make fires less survivable because when many flame retardants burn, they produce increased smoke, soot, and toxic gases. Inhalation of these toxic gases is the largest source of fire deaths. For these reasons, the city and county of San Francisco passed an ordinance prohibiting the sale of upholstered furniture containing flame retardant chemicals. This goes into effect January first, two thousand and nineteen. The ordinance applies to products that are required to meet TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen, and currently exempts products that are required to meet TB one thirty-three since manufacturers must essentially use flame retardant chemicals to meet TB one thirty-three. Repealing TB one thirty-three would allow manufacturers of commercial furniture to instead meet TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen, and shift away from the use of toxic flame retardant chemicals. And as you know, decades of research demonstrate that chemical additives used to ensure flame resistance of foam are harmful to human health as well as environmental health. Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to provide comment and support the repeal of TB one thirty-three.
Maybe we'll have them pull the microphone, speak closer into the mic. The next few. You may want to go into the webcast. Okay, next is Mr. Lucas, Donald Lucas.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a few remarks. My name is Donald Lucas. I'm a recently retired combustion scientist from the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory in the University of California at Berkeley. I've served as a public member of the Technical Advisory Committee of the Bureau. I've been working on this issue for several years, not only with the current Bureau, but with the two previous Bureau chiefs. And so I support your work. I especially want to mention that I think it's important to come up with standards that could be applied across the nation because there's a lot of different efforts going on. And it's very difficult to keep track of them all. And having different standards is not a good thing. And I do applaud California and especially the Bureau for moving forward with this. And I'm supporting your work. Thank you.
Okay, next comment. Sorry, I can't read the... Is it all Pharaoh? Okay. From the Center for Environmental Health? Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. So again, hello. My name is Álvaro Casanova. I am the policy manager at the Center for Environmental Health. CH has been working on this issue of flame retardant chemicals in consumer products for nearly ten years because we believe that it's possible to protect people's health and maintain fire safety without the use of toxic chemicals. We thank the Bureau for taking these steps to protect public health by proposing to repeal TB one thirty-three. Decades of research clearly demonstrate that the chemical additives used to ensure flame resistance of polyurethane foam are harmful to the health and environment. California's TB one thirty-three standard has led to greater use of chemical flame retardants, both in California and in other states. A study by the Science Spring Institute found evidence that college dorms containing one thirty-three certified furniture had higher levels of certain flame retardants, including HB CD, decabromothphenyl ethane, PB DE two oh nine than those that contain furniture certified to meet TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen standard. There is no fire safety data to support that TB one thirty-three has improved fire safety or reduced losses in these public spaces. In contrast, the states moved to extend TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen to commercial furniture when ensuring that Americans are protected against the cause of the vast majority of furniture-related fires. The standard can be met without the use of toxic and untested flame retardant chemicals in upholstery foam. This makes it a clear choice for ensuring the safety of Californians as well as other people affected by the California flammability standard. We're here and support the Bureau's proposed amendments to repeal TB one thirty-three. Thank you.
Next up, Lizette? Sorry. From Breast Cancer Prevention Partners, San Francisco.
Thank you. My name is Lizette Van Fleet, and I work for Breast Cancer Prevention Partners, which is based in San Francisco but is a national nonprofit organization whose mission is to reduce the incidence of breast cancer that science has shown is linked to toxic chemicals and excessive radiation. We're here today to support the repeal of TB one thirty-three because of the enormous concern around flame retardants and the links to breast cancer. In particular, I'd like to point out that firefighters in San Francisco have six times a higher level of breast cancer than, excuse me, than the ordinary population. We have considered the evidence and feel that there is no reduction in fire incidence or severity. And in contrast, it actually contributes to greater smoke toxicity in fires, the flame retardant, the chemical flame retardants that are used, that is. The other commenters have made comments that cover what I would otherwise cover, so I'll leave it there. And just to say that, again, we are in strong support of the repeal of TB one thirty-three. Thank you.
Okay, Susan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Susan Little, and I'm with the Environmental Working Group, an organization dedicated to ensuring that people live in... Organization dedicated to ensuring that people's health and environment is protected. Environmental Working Group is pleased that the Bureau is considering the repeal of TB one thirty-three and supports actions to reduce the use of flame retardant chemicals in consumer products. Flame retardants have been linked to cancer, endocrine disruption, and developmental problems in children. And we know that these chemicals migrate into people's bodies. And unfortunately, children's bodies have significantly higher levels of these chemicals than do their mothers. And based on a two thousand and sixteen study that EWG conducted with Duke University, it appears that children's mothers... Excuse me, that California's mothers and their children contain much higher levels of flame retardant chemicals than do children and mothers in other states such as New Jersey. Again, we'd like to thank the Bureau for considering this action and urge that they approve the repeal of this standard, particularly so that can we start to reduce the use of these chemicals here in California and reduce our own levels. Thank you.
I believe that concludes the comments for those that are here. So next on the list would be Kathleen Schulmer? Are you there, Kathleen?
That's sure. I apologize. I have this background, my voice. But I'll do it as I can. This is Kathleen Schulmer, State for State. I support the repeal of TB one thirty-three. There is no evidence that TB one thirty-three has improved fire safety or reduced fire losses in public occupancy buildings. This is because the TB one thirty-three standard does not address the major cause of fires, which are smoldering ignition sources. California TB one thirty-three standard has led to greater use of chemical flame retardants, which has numerous health effects on people. I urge the Bureau to repeal TB one thirty-three. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next would be Judy Levin. Judy, are you on the call still?
Sorry, just take me a moment. I was about to leave. So my name is Judy Levin, and I'm the Pollution Prevention Director at the Center for Environmental Health. My colleague, Álvaro Casanova, has already described our mission as to protect the public from exposure to toxic chemical products. And the Center fully supports the Bureau's intention to repeal TB one thirty-three. As has been discussed, TB one thirty-three was developed in nineteen ninety-one, and this twenty-seven-year-old standard has become outdated. Contrary to nineteen ninety-one, most public buildings are now equipped with automatic fire sequence systems, smoke alarms. Smoking is no longer allowed in public buildings. As a result of these innovations, fires and fire deaths have been significantly reduced. In fact, one of the things that the EH says is we work with large purchasers, including healthcare systems, to them buy healthier products, including healthcare furniture. And these are organizations who are committed to improving the health of their patients. And in some cases, they've been required by TB one thirty-three furniture, which contains toxic and untested flame retardant chemicals, which undermine their direction to protect public health. And looking at the most recent N F P A data on fire reports for healthcare facilities, it's very vulnerable. Furniture is not even listed as an ignition source because there were no fire deaths or fire injuries reported from furniture and hospitals or healthcare systems. So given the lack of fire deaths associated with TB one... With this furniture, given the lack of fire deaths from furniture, contrasted with no toxic release of toxic and untested flame retardants, it's not even a matter of weighing fire safety against public health. This is really a win-win situation because TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen provides adequate fire safety and can be met with help with use of form retardants. So thank you very much for your time. We appreciate the Bureau's work on it and hope for repeal.
Thank you, Judy. Next is Sonia from CR Club.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Sonia Lafferty, and I'm commenting today on behalf of my organization, the CR Club. I'm in strong support of the state proposal to repeal TB one thirty-three. Our review finds that there's no proof that TB one thirty-three improves fire safety. Instead, it has led to the additional use of chemical flame retardants in furniture in many types of public buildings. Recently, the Consumer Product Safety Commission moved to ban all bromine and chlorine-based fire retardants from their use in foam products and other consumer products due to the hazards that these chemicals pose to human health and the environment. TB one thirty-three increases the cost of furniture production while creating a legacy of pollution that will linger with us as these products enter the landfill. I urge the Bureau to repeal TB one thirty-three in an expedition plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Next would be Adi.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Adi Carr. I'm senior attorney and state health policy director with the National Leadership and Defense Council. We're... I'm calling to support the repeal of TB one one three and the move to extend TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen to commercial furniture. That's because TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen protects against the cause of the vast majority of furniture-related fires. And it can be met without the use of toxic flame retardant chemicals. Thank you for your time.
At this time, I want to remind you that written comments will be accepted until the close of the public comment period on Monday, September seventeenth. That's today at five P M. Are there any further comments today?
Hello, this is Arlene Bloom from the Greenpeace Policy Institute. Could I make a comment?
Yes, Arlene. Go ahead.
I want to commend the Bureau. Your movement from TB one one seven to TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen, was, as Judy said before, a huge win-win where both fire safety was modestly increased because fires were stopped in the fabric, smoldering fires, the most common kind of fires, are now stopped in fabric before they reach the flammable foam. And of course, it's a huge win for the health of everyone, pretty much, in the U S and Canada, who previously had to buy furniture where the foam was five percent by weight of flame retardant that came out and ended up in dust and in people. And we believe that revoking TB one thirty-three will also be a huge win for the health of... The extent well beyond California since the California standard is followed throughout the U S and Canada. And as you may know, there was a study at Harvard that college dorms that met TB one thirty-three have higher levels of flame retardants in dust, which would end up in the college students than flame retardants that didn't. And so TB one one seven, two thousand and thirteen will increase fire safety without these chemicals. And as Sonia said, organohalogen flame retardants in furniture are no longer allowed, but the unfortunate substitute is organofatigue flame retardants. And these are proving harmful similarly. So when it comes to flame retardant regulating chemicals, it does not work, but changing fire standards does. And this is a fire standard that can be revoked while maintaining fire safety and will greatly increase our health. So I want to thank the Bureau for your long and excellent work to make this possible.
Thank you, Arlene. Any other comments?
This is Catherine Rogers from Silence Spring Institute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Catherine Rogers. I'm a staff scientist at Silence Spring Institute. I was a researcher involved with a study that multiple people have mentioned this morning, talking about higher levels of flame retardants on a college campus that met TB... Had furniture that met TB one thirty-three. So it sounds like you already have an idea of what that study was about. But basically, we compared... It was the only study that looked at exposures to flame retardants in spaces with all furniture that adhered to one seventeen. We had fifty samples from student dorm rooms that had furniture that adhered to one seventeen, the nineteen seventy-five version, and then fifty dust samples from student dorm rooms that had furniture that adhered to one thirty-three. And we found that for several flame retardant chemicals, And we found that for several flame retardant chemicals, they were significantly higher um, in the one, in the one thirty-three norms. And we actually found nine flame retardant chemicals that had the highest concentrations that had ever been reported um, in dust in the literature, that were all from the campus that had furniture that met one thirty-three. Um, and four of those nine flame retardants were PBDE flame retardants, which have been, uh, well characterized as neurotoxic. Um, several studies have found an association with a reduction in IQ. There's other concerns as well. Um, the other five flame retardants included, um, tetra-bromobisphenol A, um, which has, um, been recently associated with uterine, um, large uterine tum- tumors in, in, in animal study. Um, another chemical, DBDPE, um, uh, one of the trip compounds, TCIPP, which is associated with neurotoxicity, dichlorine plus, and HBCV, uh, hexobromocyclodecan, which is a, um, a PBT chemical. Um, so these, and these chemicals have a, have a wide range, um, of toxicity concerns, including reproductive toxicity, neurotoxicity, cancer, and endocrine disruption. Um, so what this study did was it really shows that flammability standards do influence people's exposures to flame retardant chemicals, um, which can have significant impact on their health, and other people have already talked about, um, the, um, the lack of, um, data supporting TB one thirty-three, um, providing fire safety in commercial spaces. Um, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much for giving me the time to provide a statement.
Thank you, Catherine. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, this, this is Michael Lipsad.
Hi, Michael.
Hi, um, yeah, I, as a member of your advisory council, I'm already on record, um, in a couple of meetings as supporting the repeal of TB one, uh, three-three. And I just wanted to reiterate my support for that. I think that this is um, exactly the right thing to do considering how little risk there is in public occupancy buildings because of, of, um, changes in building codes and practices. And, um, uh, I think you've, the idea of extending TB one one seven twenty one thirteen to cover all furniture makes sense from a, a standpoint of regulatory consistency. And I'm going to be submitting some written comments as well, but I wanted to commend you for going forward with this and, um, hope this is, um, going to effect within the next few months. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. This will conclude the hearing being held on Monday, September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen for the purposes of receiving public comments regarding proposed changes in regulation contained in Title Four of the California Code of Regulations. It is now, let's call it nine thirty-eight A M., and we are adjourned. Thank you for attending today's hearing and for your interest in the proposed regulatory action.